The June 11th, 2014 School Committee Meeting will come to order. As is our tradition, please join me in saluting and pledging allegiance to our flag and our country.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have only one change on the tonight's agenda. Under Finance Subcommittee, we're going to defer fiscal '14 advancement spending discussion until our next meeting. Member Kelly had requested that, and we want to make sure she has the opportunity to hear that discussion. Any other changes, additions? Okay, do we have anyone for citizen speak? We do not. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of March 12th.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Vice Chair Zulus, seconded by Ms. Bagley Jones. On the motion, all in favor? It's unanimous. entertain a motion to approve the minutes of March 26th.
She'll move.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chair Zulus. Moved by Vice Chair Zulus, seconded by Ms. Bagley Jones. Any discussion? None. On the motion, all in favor? It's unanimous. Superintendent's report.
Thank you Chairman Walker. I'd like to invite Citizens for Diverse Milton to join us at the table. I will, after it starts, our plan, you want to go over and get their presentation ready?
I think I can do it.
No, we'll hold it. No, we'll hold it. I'll wait. Good evening. I'll leave the introductions up to Pat Lattimore.
Hi.
Welcome.
We are here from Citizens for Diverse Milton. My name is Pat Lattimore, and I'll let the rest of the committee introduce themselves. We came to follow up at the request from our last meeting with the school committee to talk about the local diversity committees, sports, diversity in sports, as well as diversity in the upper level courses. And so, Chris?
I'm Chris Navin. And one boy went through the entire system, and one boy went through Pierce successfully in both cases. So the diversity committees is something that has been an effort, a combined effort of CDM and the administration for several years now. And they're, so they rise and fall, you know, with parents coming and going through the schools, you don't have a consistent body of people. So some years, it's stronger in one school than it is in another school, or as strong than it was in that school the previous year. So there are mixed, mixed, the status of the committees in each school is.
Excuse me, can you just take the microphone, hold, you can take it right out of there and build it?
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
So we've been discussing with the superintendent whether some of the strategies that might be effective in helping committees in each of the schools become and stay effective. Several years ago, two or three years ago, at a system-wide meeting, there was a charter for the local diversity committees approved that laid out the purpose of the local committees, and things that they could do, and some sample activities. So that has been there and available to the committees for several years, but sometimes committees still flounder as to what is it we're exactly supposed to be doing? Well, there was another system-wide meeting a few weeks ago, and it was a good meeting in that there was a lot of good discussion and suggestions for action steps coming out of the meeting. The meeting focused on hiring, and there was a lot of suggestions from the schools as to how the system could improve the racial composition of its workforce. There has been some discussion in this room, I know, and elsewhere over the last few months about the composition of the staff, and that the percentage of teachers of color is not only low, but it has fallen over the last few years. So that was why the system-wide meeting focused on that, and some good ideas came out of it. And there was a lot of energy around the topic in the system-wide meeting. So the thinking is that that is one topic that the local committees could focus on in their work, something they could kind of sink their teeth into, as a support for the principal whose job it is to do the hiring, but in what way could the committee be supportive? How could they be helpful? And that may vary from one school to the next. The other idea was to, was something that we have done for, to greater or lesser effect, depending on the school, for a few years, which is focus on data. And data in particular about the achievement gap, the performance gap. If you look at the data, you can break it down by subgroups, male, female, African-American, Asian, white, you see very different levels of performance on some of the tests. And I know that the system has for several years now been focusing heavily on that issue, with some great instances of success and some frustrations. So this is another area where we think that the committees working with the principals could focus on something specific around which they could build their goals and objectives.
I'll just introduce myself, and maybe we can maybe just have a dialogue. My name is Claudia Green. I have a daughter who's a junior in the high school here, and a daughter who just recently graduated.
I'm Cynthia Geis. My youngest just graduated a couple weeks ago, and I have a daughter who's 25, who I remember meeting with Mr. Jitt when he was a guidance counselor. So it was that long ago.
My name is Karen Gross-Horan, and I am the parent of a 10th grader, and will be a rising junior soon. And she's here at Milton High School. And a 21-year-old who is a junior came through the middle school and then went to a private school after because she needed a small school setting, but I'm thrilled to be having a very positive experience here at the Milton High School for the first time.
So we were invited back to give some update about the committees, the local diversity committees. In Citizens for Diverse Milton, each of us participate at one of the schools, and so we feel like we have a handle on what those committees are doing, and trying to help them to get grounded in the work that they are trying to achieve for their schools. So, and I'd open up to any questions that you may have about the local committees. And I know that Superintendent Gormly will talk about the access to sports and the participation in the upper-level courses.
If I might be, just before the committee starts, first I want to recognize Citizens for Diverse Milton members, because we meet once a month, John Phelan and I, with Citizens for Diverse Milton, and every school has a PTO, and they have a site council, site council by Department of Education regulation. And now, through the efforts of CDM, working collaboratively with the administration, these diversity committees have started in the schools. And if Member Kelly were here tonight, she would tell you that when site councils began, I think that they were in the same place as the diversity committees, finding their place, where are they in the organization of the school? And so through John Phelan's idea, working with the principals, we've been explaining that your goals, your objectives for the year, when you meet with these three groups of parents, everything should be clear. You should be, I analogize it, everyone should be on the same train. And so your efforts, the diversity committee's efforts should supplement, the site council's efforts should supplement the PTO efforts. So that John Phelan often tells the story, all of those individuals on those committees, and the diversity committees, we should say, are made up of staff and parents and CDM members, along with the principal. They should understand the plan, the improvement plan for the school, what the achievement issues are of the school, and really the broader goals of the district. And so I appreciate you working collaboratively with us. I appreciate that you put yourselves on each one of those committees, and I think it's good for the public to know we meet once a month. And then what Citizens for Diverse Milton have worked collaboratively with John Phelan, two system-wide meetings a year, where sometimes it's a sharing out. As Chris Navin said, the literature review at the last committee, to have parents and staff members all really read the articles, share the research, there was a lot of positive energy around all of that work. So on behalf of the administration, we have expectations for next year. We're going to have two or three goals for CDM and the diversity committees, and chat our work next year. Thank you.
Sharon?
Thank you. I was just going to say that your wonderful committee is missing one person today, and we should say out loud that Elizabeth Thomas isn't with you, but I'm sure she was, is a valuable member, I know.
She certainly is, and unfortunately, there were lots of year-end school things that have to get done, and she had some family obligations around the school.
I just wanted to acknowledge that.
But thank you for acknowledging.
Chris, you mentioned the challenge of sustainability of these committees, given the changing members. Have you had any thoughts about that, beyond having one of your members sit with the, beyond each of the committees? Is there, are there any other things that you've thought about in terms of approving sustainability of these committees?
I think the basic idea is for there to be a clear mission for the committees. And the staff, principal, assistant principal, or whoever is at the committee, and teachers are the repository for that mission. They are there year to year. So parents come in, they serve a while, they leave, but if when they get there, it's clear, this is the mission, this is what we were doing on the mission last year, this is what we're going to do on it this year, then I think it will be easier for parents who are interested in those issues to come in, get involved, get active, as opposed to sort of casting around for like, what should we do?
Bagley Jones?
Are you going to go through this report?
Yes.
Yeah, so I'm going to wait then.
Well, I'm holding the microphone. I can just say quickly, the only person, the people, group that you left out of who's on the committees?
Students.
Other students.
At the high school.
At the high school, they are the scenic one on.
And I think we should also recognize that for the viewing public, that the Citizens for Diverse Milton are a larger group of citizens that meet.
Yes.
And so when we did our assistant superintendent search committee, Citizens for Diverse Milton set a representative, a member of the group that isn't sitting with us here tonight, and I know several of the members who sometimes go to your meetings who aren't represented here tonight, but it's a larger group that meets independently. Would you like me to address this? Or do you have more on the committee?
I have one question, Chris. On the question of sustainability or consistency, is it, is the challenge simply operationalizing the charter that you have, or does the charter itself need work?
I think it's more operationalizing it, but other, you wrote.
No, I would agree with that. I think it's operationalizing it, and I think, you know, I completely agree that it's, if it's clear to people coming into it, both on the staff side and the parent side, that I think, you know, then people have marching orders, I think, you know, sort of laying out the issues around staffing, and just looking at what's going on in the school, looking at data over time, and all different kinds of data, staff data, student data, et cetera, and looking at the, you know, I know Superintendent Gormly will be sharing about the higher-level classes. I mean, that's been an issue that the diversity committee here at the high school has looked at, and when you start looking at that, there's something to really address and to dig into. So I think, you know, understanding what the issues are, what the real issues are that need to be dealt with in the school system, I think that's what gives it lasting power.
I think one of the other things is that, the reason why we think the charter is so important and to operationalize that is because, you know, when a parent comes into the school and they sign up for a diversity committee, everybody has a different idea about what that means. And that, and I like Mary's analogy to the site councils and the PTO. When you join those groups, you can do a lot of different things, but at least you know what that mission is. And so what we've found, and we found this basically through a lot of feedback and through the system-wide diversity meetings, is that people say, well, we're not quite sure what it is that we, how we can help, and what would be effective. So you get a very broad spectrum, and then you get it complicated by the fact that, you know, if you have a 5th grader, now there are 6th graders, so now you're at the middle school. And there's a committee at the middle school that's very effective, but it may not be the same as, you know, because a lot of times as you go through the system, you know, the issues change.
And to Pat's point, I think with our advancement initiatives of closing the proficiency gap and early literacy, it focuses the topics. And with that charter, I'll have that on the web tomorrow on the front of the website, and I'll send it out to all of the school committee members via email first thing in the morning. Briefly, if I could ask CDM to face the screen, Glenn, do you want to turn this on? We have, for the school committee and the viewing public, Chairman Walker had asked two years ago for us to start to develop all of the data points for the district. And could I, may I ask Maura Downs, our communications specialist, and Courtney Walsh, our high school math, technology, and business department head, to join us? So we, at our next presentation, our next school committee meeting, we're presenting this data, but Citizens for Diverse Milton had asked for us to just touch upon, again, we had an advanced placement presentation, but then they wanted us to start looking at the data in the honors classes. And so anyone who understands and studies, uses data, you know that every time you begin to look at this data, which is the virtue of it, you ask more questions, and it just brings more questions out. So Maura and Courtney, John Phelan, Glenn and myself, Maura and Courtney did a lot of work on this. We just have a few slides for you. If we look at our first advanced placement slide, we've had this in the presentation. Now note that 13-14 data, the students are just taking the advanced placement test, now finishing up the advanced placement exams, but what we're charting, and again, this reporting by different groups and different methods, over the last three years, these are the reports out from the college board when they report out the advanced placement results. Courtney or Maura, do you want to address that? I think CDM and the school committee and the public's familiar with this slide. Courtney?
Sure. I want to go first. So just to explain what you're looking at on the slide here, we have three years' worth of AP scores specifically focusing on the number of students who had scored a 3, 4, or 5, because, again, put out by the college board, that is what they consider a qualifying score. So we can see year to year, looking at our different racial subgroups, as well as male and females, how that number has been rising in terms of the number of students, again, who have scored a 3, 4, or 5 on any of their AP exams.
And so when we showed this slide, we have several slides that show the number of, perhaps you go to the next slide, and this is really the slide that has always, you have to drive this slide before you drive the achievement slide. And so in many school districts, the participation in the advanced placement is limited, and you have to qualify, and you have to be accepted. And so through the efforts of past superintendents and assistant superintendents and principals, the advanced placement program at Milton High is totally open. And so to, this shows the ethnic breakdown for test takers. So the slide you were looking at previously shows you students who gained a 3, 4, or 5 on taking the test. But before you start to look at this achievement, and perhaps we should have reversed them, but the second one, if you go to the ethnic breakdown of the test takers, the population white and non-white, the non-white population at Milton High School and the Milton Public Schools is 30%. So for us to work towards matching the population in the school is very, very important. And historically, the percentage of non-white students participating, these are the test takers, so you understand the difference. And we had a lengthy presentation on all of our AP data, what programs we offer, and looking at the ratio of students earning 3, 4, and 5 over the years, increasing in disciplines, and the percentage of test takers. So again, if we can increase the percentage of test takers, that really, when we are going to talk with CDM about gatekeepers, this is a huge gatekeeping number that I am very, very conscious of. Courtney or Maura, do you want to address that? John or Glenn?
Just to add to what you had mentioned, you know, the difference between these two slides to really focus on is the fact that looking at the percentage of students who had scored a 3, 4, or 5 could represent a lot of students who were taking 2, 3, 4, possibly even 5 AP exams. And so that one student taking multiple AP exams would have multiple data points in this slide right here. But if we purely focus on a specific student who was in 1, 2, 3, 4, or 5 APs, that's how we're getting this breakdown right here. So again, just to reiterate that, we're purely looking at how many students are accessing any sort of AP curriculum on this pie chart here.
So I think these two slides are both very powerful. If you go back to the first slide and you look at the 2012-2013 line, both in terms of race and in terms of gender, that's about as good as it gets in terms of student achievement. If every achievement metric that we had looked like that, then I would say, okay, we're done. I agree though, but the challenge then is participation, which is the next slide. And I think there, the question is, since we already have what I call open enrollment, the question is simply, I'm not sure it's a gatekeeper issue, that sounds like there's somebody at the gate saying who gets in and who doesn't. I wouldn't characterize it that way, but I would say we have perhaps a recruitment problem. Because it's not, it's one out of, for African-Americans and Asians, or Asians, it's less than one out of 10, blacks, it's one out of 10, and whites, it's about seven and a half out of 10. So there's clearly something going on there, but once they get there, that first slide says, we're doing pretty well in getting that equalization of performance across different types of diversity.
John has a clarification, I think.
I believe this graph represents the total enrollment of potential folks who could take AP exams, so that 75% of students who would be in the white category represents, that 75% of those folks that take the test, and we're a district of about 70% students who are white. So the 10% in the African-American represents 10% of the 19% of students who are African-American. So that would represent about half of the African-American population that are available to take an AP exam due. So that's an overall picture of the district. So do you mean to? Yeah, well, that's wildly misleading in that case. So. That's the pie of test takers. If that's an overall enrollment of the 11th and 12th grade, the breakdown of the district is 70% non-minority, 30% minority. And right now, we're at a breakdown roughly of about 25% of the students who are non-minority taking an AP class, and 75%. So it's like a 5% swing they would like to see shift, at least to mirror the overall population of the school or of the district. So that's the point that I'm trying to make. The district is a 70%. So that, I think that's a much better picture than this would suggest. Correct. So we could have made the chart just have two colors, one which was minority, one which was non-minority, and that would represent roughly the population of the school. It would look better if it was a 70-30 picture. That would be an equal representation. It's always our hope and drive and goal to make things equitable proportionally to the populations of folks that we serve. So we have work to do. So let me try to restate that once more. 75% of the test takers are white, but that's out of a 70% of the total population that's white? Correct. So there's more students who are white taking AP exams. Yeah. 10, about 11% of the test takers are African-American, that's out of a total school population of 19% African-American. What's the Asian total population percentage? It's 5%, I believe. That subgroup doubles its capacity. I'm glad you clarified that.
But to our goal, whether it's non-white and white, our goal would be that that charter would read 70-30 to begin with, to increase the enrollment.
And I think like most of these charts, and we discussed this a little bit today when we were preparing, is that these questions that we ask ourselves and we collect data on, answer one question, and then release a lot more questions to be asked and to be explored. So the question becomes, why are only half of the population of African-Americans taking an AP, and why isn't that percentage equal in percent, and why are they doubling the amount of students who may be in the Asian subgroup? And what are we doing when we talk about recruitment to enhance or strengthen recruitment for certain groups of students who may be underrepresented? So that's the next set of questions, and I believe that there'll be a set of questions when we get into the honors data slide that we have as well, is that the great part about having someone who can do this kind of data research, and we're happy that the Advancement Budget 2.0 is providing us a data person, this is the very kind of stuff that we want to ask, get data, answer, and then know that there's three more questions that follow, because as you start to peel back any issue, there are more questions that you want to get data on. So we're looking forward to greatly to have someone in the district who can create a vehicle and mechanisms for us to store this data, input this data, and then have it report out so we can keep a better eye on it. But that's what this slide represents. Thanks.
Question, clarification. This is for AP test takers. Are the percentages of students who take AP the same as the percentages of student test takers?
Yes.
That's okay.
Yeah.
And so to the point, Mr. Walker's point about gatekeepers, recruiters, but to have the program open, and also to understand that for advanced placement, to go into advanced placement classes, that kind of work and that kind of academic preparation has to start in the middle school. And so to the point about gatekeepers, individuals, educators, administrators who understand that, and to start bringing parents in at the middle school, so that parents understand what the advanced placement program is and what honors programs are, and to have people understand by into and understand that that's the goal for their families, if you don't mind, Mr. Walker. Courtney, would you take a moment and explain the calculus project that we're becoming involved in? I think it would be very, very valuable for the public and CDM and the committee to hear.
Absolutely. So just. So just speaking to the math department and the math curriculum here at the high school, I'm sorry, here in the Milton Public Schools in general, one new initiative that we're starting this summer is called the Calculus Project, which is designed to support students starting in their summer prior to eighth grade to stay or move up into the honors level math track, so that they are setting themselves up to take calculus their senior year, whether that be honors calculus or AP calculus. And of course, that could also translate to other AP math courses such as AP computer science, AP statistics as well. But the program is designed to provide the students with three-week courses in the summer that's pre-teaching the concepts before they enter into their next year of mathematics, and also support them with after-school tutoring during the school year to make sure that they are keeping up with their work and are able to handle the honors level work. And so how this ties again into AP is even though we have an open enrollment policy here in the Milton Public Schools, of course, we want to support students and make sure that they are ready for those AP level courses. And so by providing them opportunities back in the middle school to experience that sort of rigor in their classrooms, it'll make them more prepared when they get to the high school level and have the opportunity to go into an AP course.
So in terms of the, whether we call it recruitment or gatekeepers, one of the pieces, we, this actually came from a discussion with a couple of school committee members who had mentioned, you know, how, where does it actually start that kids get onto a certain track? So by the time you get to the middle school, so we're still tracked at the middle school, and by the time you get to the middle school, if someone has recommended to you that you take, you know, the on-level course versus the above-level course, it's kind of a little bit of not an open system when you get to the high school and someone says, well, you can take the honors level course, because at that point, sometimes you're not quite prepared. It's kind of like, you know, I could, you could start playing tennis today, but I can't become a pro unless I've actually have had some lessons for many, many years. And I think that that's what, I think the calculus project is focused on, but it's also, we're trying to look at, how do kids, you know, why do we end up with underrepresentation at certain level? And, you know, it doesn't happen at the high school. I think everything, a lot of times people think, well, the high school is doing something. Well, the high school isn't doing something, it's the, you know, what happens through the whole system for a child.
And I would say that when this calculus project, we're working with Brookline, two schools in New York, and the sponsoring organization has a grant into the National Science Institute, but what will happen when this program is implemented, then this kind of pre-teaching, summer help will be replicated in other dis-- in other disciplines. And it's very interesting, when Courtney was discussing it with Glenn, John, and myself, for these eighth graders, the model that they used in Brookline, the support will happen at the high school that first year. So I said to Courtney, well, why would you have the after-school help at Milton High School when they're eighth graders? And the philosophy, again, it's all built on research, is that those eighth graders will start to identify with the high school. And there's a required number of hours that they have to come up for tutoring, pre-teaching in the summer, the support all through the year. And to enter into the program, parents had to come to sessions, parents have to have communication with the school. And so when you have that kind of support put in place, again, it will identify students at the middle school and really set that standard for the student and for the entire family.
Ms. Sheridan?
I would just say that I think before this gets posted on the web, that there should be some kind of information added similar to what you said, your explanation, John. I think that's really helpful, because at first glance, that's not what you see. So I think that your description was really helpful.
Okay.
That could be added, it would be great.
Ms. Bagley-Jones?
I just wanted to, Pat, one of the things you said about being on, in on-level courses and then going up to the high school, I think is a huge issue. And I also wondered, and not for purposes of this, but I do want to raise the fact that kids on IEPs or 504s who have some learning challenges, they're going to be on on-level courses, and nobody is going to be saying you should take an AP course, because how would they jump from here to here? It's not fair to them. So I do think that that's something else to pay attention to. I also think from my own experience, when there are kids in the middle school whose parents are told, your child is on-level courses, if you have a parent who's an advocate, and a parent who will go up there, and a parent who will get you tutoring, you know, rightly so, you'll get some support to be able to perhaps move up a level. So if that's missing, then we have a problem. And I do see, I do think that there are kids who, whatever their racial, ethnic background is, who might have a learning challenge, white and non-white, and those kids we're losing as well. So I just want to say that, because I do think that on-level experience is actually right on target.
Okay. Oh, Ms. Sheridan?
So I'm sorry, Ms. Bagley-Jones, but I just have to disagree with you slightly about the children on IEPs and 504 plans. I think that there are lots of children that might have specific learning disabilities or be on 504 plans for a variety of reasons that are absolutely participating in-
Absolutely.
-AP classes. So I don't think it's fair to make a-
Absolutely.
You know, a blanket statement.
And I thank you for correcting me on that, because that isn't really what I was trying to say, I was trying to say those kids who get lost, for whatever reason, and get put on that on-level course, what do we do, how do we pull them out of there? So you're absolutely right.
Next slide.
Courtney, do you want to address this one? You did this work. Courtney Moore?
Oh, Courtney, okay. So looking at this chart here, we're taking all of the students who were in 11th and 12th grade for the previous school year, so this was 2012 to 2013, and looking at the breakdown of the number of students in honors level math, honors level English, and honors level science classes, and breaking them down by their racial subgroups. Looking at this slide, the reason why we were putting 11th and 12th graders together as one big group of students is because that's typically how we're looking at the AP scores, at the AP test takers, and also because we do have a number of courses here at the high school who, that are mixed levels. So breaking down what, what are the possibilities for an honors level math class in 11th and 12th grade, you're going to see a lot of overlap between those depending on where the student is in the curriculum. So looking at the math column, we're saying that in the honors level math course offerings for 11th and 12th graders, 21 percent of those students are white, 16 percent of those students are black, 36 percent are Asian, and 22 percent are of mixed racial backgrounds. And so that follows the same format for ELA and science. Keep in mind that out of, thank you. Keep in mind that out of all of, that looking at this slide, we are not including any of the AP courses. So we do have mainly all of our AP offerings at the 11th and 12th grade levels, not at the 9th and 10th grade levels. So if we were to look at the numbers, the percentage of students in honors level math, English, or science classes in 9th and 10th grade, they might be a little bit higher, but at the 11th and 12th grade, we do essentially have the three different levels, which is why your, your percentages are dropping.
Just a point on that, I think, I heard something which, I'm not sure Courtney intended to say. If you look at, for instance, the science, they add up to more than 100 percent. It's not the percentage of people taking science who are of those, in those demographic categories. What that says is 46 percent of white children are taking honors level science course, 26 percent of black children are taking honors level science courses. But the point you have to remember too, which can get lost in this, is they may be in honors, that doesn't mean the others aren't, are not achieving, because they may be in AP, or they may be in the low level. This is sort of the middle group of three. So you have to be a little careful about how you, you know, this is, people who are in AP courses are not in honors courses. This is sort of the intermediate track.
Right, but while all the things being equal, then you'd like to see each column at the same level.
Relatively percent, relatively the same percent. Yeah.
And so when we started, we're preparing this data for the 25th, and Citizens of Duris Milton asked for this data. You know, what we're doing is expanding this and looking at all of the levels. But Courtney Walsh, again, had to actually do this by hand, go over all the data. So as I said, it just opens up more questions for us to look at and share with administrators, teachers, guidance counselors. And then the next question that was asked, we have never charted before, we gave isolated years, if we could move on to the athletics, we would give isolated years, the data around athletics, if we could move on to that side. And so what we've done here, this is a first look at, and this is the first time that it was done for all three seasons, every single team, non-minority and minority, we could call it non-white and white and non-white. And so this is the first year that all of that data was charted, and we're beginning to look at it with our athletic director, again, look at it at the high school level, share it with our coaches, and look at the individual teams, and make plans for the coming year on, again, recruitment, discussions, and the work that we have to do at Milton High. So this really, we've shared with the school committee in past years, isolated seasons, but this was the first year in administrators plus that we actually kept this data. So we appreciate it.
These are wrong numbers, not percentages.
Wrong numbers.
So those are the questions that Citizens of Duris Milton had asked for. We'll, I'll, I'll email it to Citizens of Duris Milton tomorrow. We went over all the numbers today. The school committee has it in their packets.
Mr. Walker?
Ms. Bagley-Jones?
I have a question other than the obvious statement, which is, you know, obviously, this is of concern, that there are three or few athletes in several of these sports of students of color, not three less athletes, that's not what I meant. And one of the questions I would be interested in, and I don't know how we would do this, but is to find out from the sports that are fairly equal or fairly representative, why are they and why aren't these? You know, what, is it perception? Is it experience? Is it, you know, I, I don't know what it is, but it would be very curious why those sports are so many are divided equally or about equal. What's the difference with how they get diversified like that? I mean, this is, is really concerning to see it this starkly expressed.
Can I speak to something as just- Tom? I would say as far as crew, skiing, and hockey, it's, crew probably is because of swimming. You have to be a pretty proficient swimmer, and unfortunately, it's kind of a cultural statistic that a lot of culturally diverse people do not swim early in life and do not become proficient swimmers. So unfortunately, that's something that we've been talking about in the crew program and want to address, because we're also talking about scholarships and things like that, but we have to have the proficient swimmers in order to provide the scholarships. As far as ice hockey and skiing, a lot of it is exposure at an early age and expense. Having grown up a skier, myself, I was the only black person out there skiing my whole entire life. And now it's changing, but I will say that definitely is exposure and expense, and it's just culturally not a very diverse sport. Baseball, I will say, is the one thing that strikes me as, what is going on in Milton with baseball? I don't get that. And that's been something that's been a concern for years, and parents have raised concerns in, in the community about that. And I think lacrosse, perhaps, you know, the introduction early on, I'm not sure exactly what it is, but just starting earlier to introduce the program more broadly.
And so to Mrs. Warren's point, that my observation, and again, when we put out this further, I believe in these feeder teams that Ms. Warren's talking about. And if you look at the towns feeder teams and all of the teams that are out on the field, and again, this is valuable data for us as a school system, as a high school to look at with our coaches and our athletic director and our administrators.
Ms. Bagley-Jones?
And I know, for example, with lacrosse, they've just started a feeder team, younger kids recently, you know, within the last year or two, or whatever it's been, but that's just one. And that, I, I don't even think there's a girls' lax team that's a feeder team yet.
There is.
There are students over there, might know, there is now a girls' lax-
I believe, I believe there are girls, there are, there are a lot of clinics, I'm not sure exactly, but an exact feeder team.
But I mean, for high school.
For the high school, I don't believe there's a Milton team there. I just know that the girls' team puts on a lot of feeder clinics throughout the year.
Oh, I see. Okay.
And I'm not sure if Milton itself has its own team.
Got it.
Milton has a youth lacrosse team for both boys and girls. It's very, very active, it's been in place for above 15 years, 10 years.
Lacrosse?
Boys and girls lacrosse, yeah.
And if I might, one other, Mr. Dolan was here with the rugby team, the coach, the other night, and so he said that on Sundays all summer, they were going to have a free rugby clinics on Sunday mornings, and he was going to put it in the local paper. So I spoke to him at the meeting and after the meeting, and said, you should give it to us, and we'll give it to the elementary principals and the teachers, because if you don't get the local newspaper, all due respect, you're not going to know that a Sunday morning's free clinics are happening. And so it, so everyone wants these, this data to reflect the, populate the diversity of our community and our school, and when you bring it to people's attention, you give them opportunities, you give them ideas about recruiting and how to contact families, they want to do that.
The first time I heard about this topic, another parent told me that some of the kids of color were telling other kids of color not to even bother to try to go out for certain sports, because the coach would not bring in kids of color. And it just totally shocked me, and I, it sounded like a rumor, but I'm just saying that it's something to think about, that we need to educate the coaches, and to be sh-- and this, this information is critical, you know, it's, it's sound. So I'm just saying that we may want to, to pat, to show everybody this, and to be sure that everyone's on the same page.
Well, Cynthia, I couldn't let that go without saying that there wouldn't be a coach at Milton High School. You made the inference that maybe it's a rumor, a coach, what did you say?
The, what this woman told me was that, I realize I'm bringing up something a little bit hot here, but the woman told me that some of the kids of color were, were telling other kids of color not to even try out for certain sports, because there was some issues with the coach, and that may be one of the reasons, or at least something to consider.
Again, for anyone-
Let me take that. Let me, let me take that. The, the problem with making a statement like that, I, I can be assured that I speak for every person sitting at this table. If you have specific information that there's a coach who is making decisions based on race, I would urge you to talk to any one of us, students included, immediately. Cause I, cause I don't know, it just, we, we can't leave something like that hanging out there. So either there's some specific information, specifically who was the coach and what sport was, was it? And I don't know that you need to say that on, on television, but you can certainly write it down for any one, any one of the people sitting at this table, and I can assure you, it will be addressed immediately. That's not, that's not acceptable behavior. So I don't, so as citizens of this town, and as public officials, we shouldn't let that happen. We shouldn't let that be a rumor. It needs to get addressed immediately. So if you have specific information, write it on a piece of paper and give it to me or anyone sitting at this table.
Okay.
Mr. McCarthy?
If I could just make one opinion, just one point to that. I have like, I would say extreme exposure to every single coach, or just about every single coach on this list, I would say well over 75 percent of the coaches I know personally, either having them in the classroom, having them as a coach, or just knowing them through the community. From everything I've heard, and obviously I'm a white male, so it may come differently, but I've never seen a coach discriminate, not even on color, but on anything, any- but I've never seen a coach discriminate, not even on color, but on anything, any, how a person's perceived, anything, I would never see a coach at Milton High. I think we hire amazing coaches, and it shows through the awards and the accolades they get, that a coach would ever make a decision such like that, and if they ever did, I see a lot of kids saying, I won't play for you. Most kids in Milton, if they ever were to hear that, they wouldn't play for the coach, especially me.
I think that, you know, and I appreciate, Mr. Walker, what you just said about the ability for someone to report. I would say that one of the pieces, because there's always perception out there, and so I would hope that maybe what we could do is to provide a safe place for people to actually report something, if they feel like it really is there. Because I know that a lot of times people don't have, you know, the schools are authority. I'm not sure how many people would want to approach a public official, I know some of us do, and complain a lot, and other people, I think, but the vast majority of people feel like it, you know, they can't do that. So maybe that's an opportunity for us to have a conversation, as I think Cynthia said, this is a hot topic, but if it is a rumor out there, then I think that it should be addressed, because I agree, you can't leave it just lying out there and sort of throwing it out, and so I appreciate Cynthia bringing it up, by the way, because I think it does give an opportunity for us to discuss.
I would just add, I think this, these, this information sort of ties in with some of the information that's been gathered, I know, by the diversity committee at the high school, in terms of what, I think at the middle school as well, about asking kids about their sort of sense of belonging in the school, and are they connected with an activity, an after-school activity, or an adult in the school? And I think, you know, this is, this is a great, kind of, just set of information, of data to look at, and like, you know, and how can you affect change in this, and that really will, you know, that can make a huge difference to kids and their connectedness to the school, and that in turn impacts academic outcomes as well, I think.
Thank you.
So, thank you very much. We'll send out tomorrow to the school committee and post your charter on our website, and if anyone has any further questions, they can direct them to me.
Thank you for the opportunity, we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Ms. Bagley-Jones?
I just want to ask, so where will we go from here? I know you'll follow it up, but this is so striking, the numbers, and I know Mr. Rooney would really want to be involved in this.
I would agree with you that, and the superintendent, that that's an appropriate question for the athletic director. Here's the data, and what does it tell us, and what do you suggest we do about it?
And just along those lines, is there an intention now to do something with the raw data? Because those numbers in some respects are striking, but is, it seems to me that it may benefit from putting it, putting some of those numbers in context, looking at percentages, and looking at it based on the total population. So I don't know if there's an intention to do that, but I think, I think that might help some of the analysis, if some of that data is actually looked at critically, rather than just the raw numbers.
When we do this work? We take all of this data, and we use it, and we sit down as a leadership team, and so we don't do this work without then sitting down and coming up with plans and sharing it with the individuals who are in charge, the coaches, the teachers, and the different disciplines. So to your point, we will follow up.
Thank you. This is...
Thanks.
Thank you. I'd now like to ask Amy Gale and Courtney Walsh to join us at the table. So this discussion is around the administration of the PACC, PACC test. So we're all familiar that we've been taking the, our students have been taking MCAS, and again, MCAS began at grades four, eight, and 11. Passing MCAS at grade 11 is a graduation requirement. Now, students three through eight take MCAS in English and math, science in grades five, eight, and at Milton High School, grade nine. So this MCAS testing program in Massachusetts has grown from three grades, one discipline, to all of those grades, English, math, and science, and has become part of the graduation requirement. And so there is a movement across the state and across the country to take this testing and make it online testing, and to move it into a more effective testing of the Common Core. And so in Massachusetts this year, I brought you up to date how there was pilot testing of the PACC exam, and randomly, school districts and grades were chosen, and in the Milton Public Schools, five of our six schools were chosen. We then asked for our sixth school to participate in the pilot this year. Courtney and Amy, John, Glenn, and myself will bring you up to date on that. And now, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education is asking by June 30th, I spoke to Mr. Walker, and to determine whether next year, students within our district will take PACC or MCAS. There was a decision from your professional organization, from Steve Finnegan, who I'm proud to say is a Milton Public School parent, a respected attorney across the state, and on behalf of your professional organization, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, you're asked to vote. So school committees across the state are voting on next year's administration of PACC and MCAS. I want to put this in the context that all 11th graders will next year take English and math MCAS, five and eighth, fifth and eighth graders will take the science MCAS, and our ninth graders will take the biology-science MCAS. So the decision that you're being asked to make tonight, and that I'm recommending to you for next year, is our students in grades three through eight take the PACC examination, and Courtney and Amy are here to explain to you tonight, the recommendation that I've made to you, that our math, our grade nine students take the math, and our grade 11 students take the English PACC exam. Courtney and Amy are going to explain to you what our theory is behind this. Briefly, because the viewing audience doesn't have this recommendation, and I'll put it on the web tomorrow, I don't want to read to you. Students in Milton have been participated in, had a head start on experience this next-generation assessment this year. Mr. Walker had asked for us to get the documentation, and Courtney Walsh has communicated with Desi that our students will be at no risk, and they're going to calibrate the scores so that Mr. Walker will explain himself that, and many people feel we're into these advancement initiatives, and we're charting our progress, we're going to be able to continue to do that. We're going to be able to still remain and chart student growth percentages, and work this into our education evaluation new tool. So the recommendation that I'm making to you now is that you vote tonight for grades three through eight, again, to take the online testing next year. Courtney and Amy have some information to share with you. Math at grade nine, and English at grade 11. So Courtney and Amy, do you want to briefly, and then perhaps the school committee, his questions of Glenn, John, myself, or the two of you, to us, to an administrator, to a principal, we all feel that Milton Public Schools, Milton Public Schools and our students are prepared to take this testing.
So in 2010, the Milton Public Schools began the process of looking at the new standards, the Common Core standards. And in 2011, when the state of Massachusetts adopted the Common Core standards and distributed the Common Core State Standards, the work with teachers continued. We had been immersed in the work of helping children look more deeply at content for many years prior to PACC coming about this year. And one of the things that we've noticed now from taking PACC is that it's become an authentic response to the Common Core State Standards, as opposed to PACC, pardon me, where we find that it's not as connected, as well-connected to the Common Core State Standards, which the teachers have transitioned their curriculums to address. In grades three through eight this year, we were able to pilot or field test the PACC exam in math in some grades, and in English Language Arts in some grades, across all grade levels, starting with our third graders all the way up through our eighth graders. What was very interesting and remarkable to us was that our third and fourth graders handled this with great ease, as they've grown up with technology in the classrooms, and our elementary schools have such great access to technology, thanks to the Milton Foundation for Education. And so the third and fourth graders were very, very comfortable with these. The children in the middle school handled it really well, and they also found that the questions that they were answering, although sometimes there were technology glitches, which they got more frustrated with than the little kids, they found that the questions were far closer to the types of questions that they're responding to in class every day. As opposed to MCAS, where you can take time away from your schedule to prep for the test, no longer do you have to do that with PACC. PACC is a more authentic exam tied to what's happening in the classrooms every day, and I think that was what the feedback we were getting from teachers was. It also really helped to clarify for teachers some of the intent behind the Common Core State Standards, what do questions look like when we're not developing them in-house, but when it's happening through the PACC consortium. And I think we found great success with our children on these exams, and I think we are looking forward to watching the children progress over the next couple of years, as the PACC begins to take root in many communities throughout Massachusetts and beyond.
So one of the major, one of the decisions is for grades three through eight, and that is a separate decision from what will happen at the high school versus three through eight. So one decision, as explained in Superintendent Gormley's memo, is that three through eight must choose either the PACC or the MCAS for all of those grades, for math and English. Science is a separate issue off the table, and therefore, fifth and eighth graders will still be taking the MCAS exam for science, which is not a decision that we can make. At the high school level, we have a different decision to make, which is separate from three through eight, where we can choose to go with the PACC exam for ninth-grade math and/or English, and 11th-grade math and/or English. However, the ninth-grade biology exam will still be MCAS, and the 10th-grade exam will still be MCAS for English and math. And so at the high school level, reiterating what Amy was talking about in terms of taking our curriculum at the high school level, and converting it to be in line with the Common Core standards, we feel that the ninth graders would be ready to take the PACC exam for mathematics, and at the 11th grade, we felt like the English curriculum is more in line with the Common Core right now, as the math department is shifting with our new reimplementation of the integrated math courses in ninth, 10th, and 11th grade. So the recommendation that we feel on the school side is that ninth graders taking the PACC exam in math would be beneficial, and 11th graders in English Language Arts. Another reason why we were hesitant to recommend that ninth graders take both PACC in math and ELA is because those ninth graders are still taking the biology exam for MCAS, and at the 11th grade, the students would have come off of taking the graduation requirement, 10th-grade MCAS for math and English. So recognizing that some students might still be taking that exam in 11th grade, we did not want to test in both of the subjects for the PACC examination.
Ms. Bagley-Jones?
I want to make sure I really understand this. So Mary, down on the first page, the 1, 2, 3, 4th paragraph, where you say, I recommend that the Milton School Committee vote the PACC test, so you're saying just the PACC test?
Yes, so that's the PACC. That's an excellent question that I just assumed. So MCAS will not be given in grades three through eight, except in science, five and eight. That is a great question, and I feed the team daily communications from the Department of Education, and I just took that for granted. You're absolutely right. This year, you're, Ms. Bagley-Jones, you're right, the field test or the pilot was in addition to MCAS, but this would be the testing for next year, taking the place of MCAS. And all of the data, another one of my bullets indicates to you that we'll get this data back faster than we get MCAS data back.
Ms. Padera?
So I just have a question, is this, are they still taking MCAS, science, and technology in those grades, because PACC does not offer a similar test?
Correct.
Are they going to eventually offer that, or will we always be using an MCAS version of that?
The Common Core is just in the process of adopting, and I am not a science curriculum coordinator, but I do know, because I sit next to one every day, the Common Core, the national standards for science are in the process of being adopted now, so the next-generation standards aren't even fully inked, officially published yet. So when those are, testing may come down the pike, but at this point, because those standards have not been published yet, that's why they're sticking with MCAS for the science, technology, and engineering.
Okay, so they'll continue then to provide that, that the MCAS, no matter what happens to MCAS as a whole for ELA and math, will continue to provide that until PACC has provided a different version, right? So we're still going to be testing our kids in science, which is a big deal. And then my other question is, so for grades nine and 10, or nine and 11, I'm sorry, so math in grade nine, so we won't be testing, and we are now, we won't be testing our grade nine students on English at all? Is that correct?
Correct, but we are actually not testing them in English right now. So what we currently have this year is a ninth-grade biology MCAS, and a 10th-grade math and ELA MCAS, and that's what we've had for years. So it's always been grade nine for science, grade 10 for math and English.
So this is actually in addition, we're doing something more in ninth grade than we were? It's not that we're just testing math, we're testing math in addition to biology?
Correct.
Okay. And grade 11, is that the same? We're adding English, and in the past, they were just tested in, there was nothing at all? So this is an additional, okay.
This is an additional assessment. The, the long-term goal, does become adopted by the states that are still with the consortium, is to test ninth, 10th, and 11th grade in math and English. So that will be a big change from what we've been used to, which is why our, our thought process of testing the ninth graders in math and the 11th graders in English is to sort of ease into that transition, where testing will happen at nine, 10th, and 11th, where traditionally, it's been one exam for biology in ninth, and two in 10th grade.
Excellent, very clear, thank you.
And if I might, to Ms. Bagley-Jones, to Ms. Padera's point, another difference other than the online testing, the PACC is timed. Where those of you who have had children are familiar with MCAS, it's untimed, and some students spent the entire day on the exam. So this is timed.
Ms. Zulus?
Thank you, I have two questions. One is, is there a thought on migrating to English in the ninth grade and math in the 11th grade? Is there, is there a thought on the timing for that, for the PACC?
In terms of our district, or in terms of the PACC assessment?
Well, I guess both, I guess...
So for the ninth-grade MCAS requirement for biology, for the foreseeable future, that exam will stay and exist. For the 10th-grade math and English MCAS exam, that is still in our legislature for two more academic years, so the 14, 15 school year and the 15, 16 school year. So after that would be when the next-generation assessment, presumably the PACC assessment, would be ninth, 10th, and 11th, English and math.
Okay.
So that's sort of the timeline for what we're planning for. So district-wise, on a district level, our thought process is ninth-grade math next year, along with 11th-grade English, and presumably the following year, math and English in ninth and 11th.
Okay.
We won't ever have the decision to implement the new PACC assessment in math and English for 10th grade until MCAS has left.
Right, right, I understand. And then the second question, more broadly, what if any of the downsides to this decision? That, in all candor, you can, you can, you can think of?
It's interesting, it's a big transition to go from taking a paper and pencil test to taking a computer-based test, and I certainly think that for some of our children, and I watched high schoolers take it, typing math is a very different activity than writing math, so that's some work that we have to do with our students.
So that's some work that we have to do with our students. I think reading on screen for especially our youngest students is very challenging. Fourth graders, we watched, have to write an essay. And a fourth grader typing an essay as opposed to the actual process that they use in the classroom, where the writing process is supported and it takes multiple days, we were seeing shorter pieces of writing from kids. So it's definitely going to inform especially our technology curriculum moving forward, because we did notice some things that we really did need to address. Fortunately, they've put out some really nice guidelines for people in terms of addressing their technology curriculum, some great tutorials that we were able to use with the students from third grade all the way up through 12th grade or 11th grade for the math. And we've given children through Study Island lots of opportunities to practice reading on screen and to use tools to highlight and read specific lines and drag and drop. But there's still work to be done in that area, without a doubt, and it's a big transition for our children. Again, I think the youngest children are going to have the easiest time with it. So maybe some of our eighth, ninth, 10th graders are the ones who may struggle the most with it at the beginning, just because they've come up through the educational ranks in a different way than our young kids now.
Thank you.
Mr. McCarthy?
One question I had was, in with MCAS in the high school right now, it's a graduation requirement. And when it comes to Park, if we do implement, if Park is implemented in English in grade 11 and math in grade nine, will passing the Park exam become a graduation requirement next year?
No. So for two more school years, the 14, 15, and 15, 16 school year, that 10th grade MCAS exam will still be the graduation requirement, which will follow those students who will be in 10th grade in the 15, 16 school year. So the Park exam for ninth and 11th will not be a graduation requirement during those two school years.
So the sophomore, so who's going to be, like, the people that are going to be in grade 10, the freshmen right now, the sophomores next year, will still take English MCAS as 10th graders?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Phelan?
I just want to add to Amy's answer to Mike, which is sometimes a downside answer is actually an upside answer, which means that the students who may demonstrate difficulty navigating the technology, one more year, but in advance of everybody else is actually an advantage for them. And setting that expectation for our teachers makes the district push forward to ensuring that we're using technology every day. So we're actually going to be a year ahead of other folks who are maybe taking it on paper or not taking it at all. From a student's perspective, getting in front of the content is one big issue, to the point that Mrs. Gale made about how the questions are a little different, and how they are asking students to demonstrate things that are happening in the classroom as opposed to MCAS-type questions that are different. And we feel that these questions are really authentic to what students are learning. And then the second piece that's an advantage is just a technology learning curve that we're going to be one step ahead in, if in fact Park becomes an assessment. For the district, it's really nice to be able to watch how these questions and assessments influence how we organize our scope and sequences of our curriculum in all of our subject areas that may alter a bit from what MCAS looks like for us now. So, and I want to mention that Kristin asked about what grades we were testing at. The reason why we're not going into it anymore at the high school is we're trying to just be measured in our response and not overtest anybody, any one grade. So that's why we only added one thing in nine and only added one thing in grade 11, because that data is good for us to have, but we never want to make that at the expense of the students being overtested in this first year and probably in the next year as well. So it's good for the district to learn all these things, and it's very good for the students to be exposed to this content and this type of questioning. And also, it pushes the technologies with that high expectation that it's going to be assessed in the spring, as opposed to putting it off another year. So I think that's an upside answer to a downside question.
I think that positive sunny outlook that you have is going to be sorely missed.
My glass is always full. My glasses always full.
Ms. Sheridan?
I want to say that I'm fully in favor of supporting this recommendation by Superintendent Gormly, but I've been intrigued by something all night, and I just have to ask it, Amy, because you just kind of touched on it. How do students in high school show their work, you know, their mathematical thinking on a computer? When I think about all the calculations that are required, and I'm just intrigued by it, so I wonder if you could just speak to it briefly?
Sure. And I can start it, and Courtney might fill in a little bit. They use something called an equation editor, which provides opportunities for them to use multiple clicks to insert equations into their explanation, which is not unlike what we do when we type up a math test or something like that in Microsoft Word. They need to know what they need to click in order to insert a mixed number, a square root, an exponent, those kinds of things. And again, the tutorials that Park provides, they're wonderful. That being said, it's something that students certainly need practice with. And then there'll be spaces for them to insert text as well. So is there anything you want to add to that? Great explanation. And also, just to keep in mind that when the students are taking the Park exam, they have their computer in front of them, whether it be a Chromebook or a desktop computer, but they do also have paper and pencil next to them just for scratch work. So most of the students are still working out their calculations by hand and then just inserting that final number. So they're not showing their work like they used to on the, as they still do on the 10th grade MCAS exam, where you can see, you know, how they're carrying the one or whatever it might be, they're inserting their final answer in this typed-out paragraph using that equation editor.
And in MCAS, when there's no scrap paper allowed, and you're saying it is allowed here, so that's...
Correct.
Yeah.
For MCAS, everything, you're just putting right into your answer booklet.
Okay. Thank you.
So I think this is a, oh, Ms. Bagley-Jones?
Just, sorry, my pen. One thing, I do really appreciate the prep work that you all have done and gotten us ahead of the curve. I mean, that's really impressive. I, of course, am sitting here in horror, and Glenn's saying, "Oh, don't worry, it's easy." So two extremes here. But I, so I do really appreciate that, and I just have one question, one request. Mary, did I hear you say the time test on this won't, that kids won't get extra time on accommodations? Or did you say it the opposite way?
No, I said with MCAS, all students could take the entire day, but this is a time test. But if you have accommodations from an IEP, then you can take more time.
Okay, thank you. And then my request would be, I saw, I got somebody's notes, I think John's by accident, where there was a nice little column with what was what and when. I think that's your handwriting, John.
That is?
Yes. So I...
I'm going to answer that question carefully. That could be.
Maybe it's not.
Member Zulus answered that question.
But that would be a great thing to have fleshed out with the grades, what's being taken, what's not.
Well, we do have that prepared for you.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
So to put closure on it, would you bring up that slide, just in case anyone asked? And it's an excellent question.
I can't confirm nor deny that that's my actual right handwriting of the...
Well, I think Ms. Bagley-Jones articulated it.
Is this your graphic?
I hope, I hope, I hope it isn't. Not yet.
So this is what you're, this is what you're asking?
Mm-hmm.
Each grade and their respective assessments for next year.
Okay. So the date on it, okay. The date would be 2000 and...
Spring?
Spring of 15, correct.
Okay.
So we can add that to our presentation.
So I think this is a very thoughtful recommendation, which I'm in support of. My only concern, which I've talked at length with Ms. Walsh about, and thank you for those long conversations, they were reassuring, but I still have a concern that we've thought more about this than the state. And we've created what I would call a very rigorous measures matrix, where we're very clear on our advancement initiatives, which are our key priorities, how we will measure Those also play a significant role in superintendent's evaluation, and there's a student learning outcomes goal that relies heavily on MCAS performance as a measure of success. I'm concerned that there may be a 12- to 18-month period where we're not exactly sure how we're doing. And for obvious reasons, we need to be able, each year, but specifically for this year and next, we need to be able to measure with rigor how we've done, particularly on English Language Arts and math. The science timeline might be a little longer, and Mr. Phelan's going to talk about that next, I think. But I'm concerned that we may not have the information we need to measure precisely how we've done. And that obviously affects the lives of those students if that's the case. Any more reassuring comments you can offer, Ms. Walsh?
Well, I know that, I believe, the school committee did hear about equal percentile ratings before, so I could explain that again.
I remain skeptical, but we heard about that.
Sure. So that is still the answer that I did receive from the state, explaining how we could take a student's score report and say, did they score warning, failing, needs improvement, proficient, or advanced on the Park assessment, so that when we say that word out loud, it means the same as if they had taken the MCAS exam. So we have been told by the state that we will be able to label each student's score report with one of those four markings. And therefore, if the state is saying that those are equivalent values, we could move forward with measuring any of the advancement initiatives or achievement gap goals using the same numbers without a break in reporting out.
And that information will be available on a schedule that is either the same as or earlier than MCAS?
Correct.
Okay.
The other thing to note is that although next year is a hold harmless year, where our school and district levels will remain the same if we choose to take the Park exam, they will still report out on what the levels would be if it were not hold harmless. So that can help us sort of in decision-making when we're looking at that. So for example, if we have a school who's a Level 1 and it ended up a Level 2, although we would be held harmless and stay a Level 1, we would have that information to know that the PPI on that school decreased. Similarly, if a school was a Level 2 and increased, we would have that information as well. So it can only help, it cannot hurt, next year.
And the only other thing I'd like for you to give some thought to is how we distinguish between perhaps different scoring that has, that's related to competency as opposed to lack of familiarity with either the testing or the mode of testing.
Yeah. Ms. Bagley-Jones?
Oh, so my only other comment would be, or request would be, when this gets rolled out to parents? When, I'm saying, this will be rolled out to parents.
Absolutely.
Because we want them to support and understand it, just like we wanted them to understand MCAS.
Absolutely.
So that would be a helpful thing in terms of the achievement.
We'll communicate with parents via meetings and in writing, so that every parent fully understands.
Great. Thank you.
And there were meetings already this year, right, around this year, as Park assessments as well for parents, so.
Just because I can't resist equal percentile conversions. In response to your question about the worry about the...
I can say equal percentile, but I'm still skeptical.
As you should be. Do you worry about the conversion at that point? The whole notion that you can translate one into the other is based on the notion that both tests are equally valid. And you could make the argument that we're waiting for, you know, more validity on Park. You could similarly make the argument that MCAS isn't terribly valid to begin with, so aiming for MCAS's level of validity is possibly not what we should be doing either. So I don't think necessarily putting it off is going to improve any of that. I think there is going to be a certain amount of ambiguity on that crossover. It is unavoidable. This is, you know, sort of the best measure you can do, you're hoping that your tests are equally valid, and therefore, you can make that conversion seamlessly. But, you know, that remains to be proven. And as I say, you know, there's some question as to whether we should consider MCAS the appropriate measure of validity.
It's too late for that discussion.
And I also, may I add one more note, that I want to recognize Amy Gale and Courtney Walsh and John Phelan, because we've attended every workshop, every conference statewide, and every webinar, and we've become experts on it. When they send out a Q and A, we've already asked every question and gotten every answer. And I want to tell you that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, in my career, has never given so much support to public school educators and administrators than they have around this initiative. So to your question, it's asked 20 different ways at every session we go to, and they're going to give us, they know that it's a primary concern with school committees and administrators.
So do I have a motion on superintendent's recommendation?
I'll move the recommendation, move approval of the recommendation of the superintendent for Park assessments, adopting the Park assessments. Second?
Moved by Ms. Sheridan, seconded by Ms. Bagley-Jones. On the motion, all in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Gale, Ms. Walsh. Next, I'd like to ask Assistant Superintendent John Phelan to address what we refer to as a follow-up item that Mr. Walker had asked to be on the agenda from our science administrator's presentation on the timeline for our science initiative. And this handout is in your packet.
So in your hands was a memo that I have written to the superintendent in regards to a question that was raised at the school committee meeting when Milton High School Department head Ed Melvey, Middle School Coordinator of Science Christy Chiopetta, and Elementary Coordinator Bernadette Moonen presented science data. They did a great job of outlining how the Advancement Budget 1.0 had been spent and what the goals were, and how Advancement 2.0, which will be implemented in the school year 14, 15, is hoped to be implemented, and the question about when can we start to measure success in science as it relates to these funds being expended on science. So I thought the best way to do it was to create a chart that outlined the major portions of the 1.0 science initiative and the 2.0 science initiative. And I do have one mistake that I'll correct when we get down to it. So I essentially outlined, if you look on the top left-hand side, this says out loud that in the 2013, 14 school year, Mr. Pavlichek, could I have the clicker if you don't mind? I think there's a laser right there. Okay. Okay. So in the 2013, 14 school year, which is the year that we're in, the Advancement 1.0 budget purchased, the implementation of STEM materials in grades 1 and then continuing it to grade 2. The advancement funds also provide a professional development in both grades 1 and 2 for the year that we're in. The advancement budget for 2.0 in science will purchase materials for curriculum guides and curriculum materials for grades 3, 4, and 5 in science. And also, that will be a year-one of the implementation cycle of professional development and the implementation of those science kits. Not all of those kits will be implemented in the same year, that's just too much material for teachers to go through and too much professional development. So we made it a two-year cycle, so in 14, 15, the materials will be presented, PD will be conducted. In year 2, the implementation and distribution of units will be finished and complete, and the implementation of PD will be complete. And that two-year cycle should result in the assessment of fifth graders in the 16, 17 school... the assessment of fifth graders in the 16, 17 school year. Those outcomes could be and should be related directly to the experience that those students received in science at the elementary level with the materials purchased by advancement 1.0 and 2.0. And if you want to kind of get a feel for who that is, that's the current grade two cohort. When we get down to the middle school, the middle school's a year early. We purchased with the 1.0 funds all the materials for grades six, seven, and eight in the year that we're in right now, and those were partially distributed to all of the teachers in grades six, seven, and eight. And the PD on that partial implementation has been provided by Kristi Chiopetta. Next year, the year two, distribution of materials will go out, and the year two, second cycle of the implementation of PD will be conducted. And we should say safely that those students in that cohort, the current grade six students in their eighth grade year in spring of 2016, should have scores or assessment outcomes that are directly impacted by that science initiative. So this is, I believe, a very, very methodical process of a two-year cycle of implementation of advancement 1.0 and 2.0 in science. It's a two-year rollout of both material distribution and professional development because there's so many units of study that have to be purchased and be given to staff and professional development provided, that we'll be doing it in a two-year cycle, that we feel is appropriate to have that extension of when we feel the outcomes will tell the story. At the high school, it's a little different. That gray box should first of all say, "Spring of 2015," not 2016, so that's my mistake. And the materials purchased at the high school, which will come out during the school year 1415, are more in line with the science electives in science, the upper-level science classes in advanced placement than they are in the MCAS assessment that we will have in place. So your MCAS scores in science in grade nine at Milton High School essentially should be ongoingly held, the school should be ongoingly held accountable as the years go by. And if you notice, our ninth grade scores at the high school in science are the best in the district, and they have always been at a much higher level than our fifth and eighth grade scores. But the difference being that we are realigning the schedule, and we're creating more support via the schedule for students who may exhibit the need for support through our proficiency gap work, that when we get those eighth grade scores, we're putting some supports in place in their ninth grade year concurrent to their taking biology, and that allows that extra support to take place. So not in materials and professional development as much as in scheduling and proficiency gap support. That work will be done this year and next year, and we believe that the 2015 spring scores should be held accountable to those types of initiatives and the funding attached to those initiatives. So they will happen at different years. It's a very, very structured, organized approach to distribution and professional development and scheduling of support, and touching on the proficiency gap initiative and funding, and touching on the science advancement 1.0 and 2.0 materials and funding.
Thank you.
That's very helpful. And the only thing I would ask for in addition is, similar to what we've done with other success measures, what type of improvement, what degree of improvement we expect to see in '17, '16, and '15 respectively?
Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
And then just one question. Oh, sorry.
Mr. Zulis?
Just one question. So John, I think from what you said, that empty box in 2013, 2014 Milton High School, that could have in it supports in place or supports for students. That's ongoing work that really is in that box now, right?
Correct, because it's not a material or a professional development. It's actually, it's a scheduling issue in the support during the day and some after-school support, so it just didn't have the same type of data in it as the other two levels. And none of this would be able to be taking place without the advancement initiatives that this committee has been able to push forward in advancement 1.0 and 2.0.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Briefly, just the happenings. In your high school library that you're sitting in now for the last two days, we've been going through kindergarten screening. Kindergarten screening will continue tomorrow and Friday with the Tucker and Glover, 319 kindergarteners with their families. We heard today, some came dressed in costume, some brought lawns, and it's a, it's, as we say to the kindergarten parents, it's a beginning of a 13-year relationship. Did our high schoolers see them walking through the schools today?
I saw a couple of parents.
Good. With their children, right?
I think so.
We had very successful first grade orientation that this, it was brought up at this table. The principals reported in to me, between 35 and 40 families at the schools, questions and answers afterwards. Every principal has reported in. Those were very successful orientation programs to get parents into the schools. I received some positive emails that I'll share with you about that, those open houses. The Pierce Middle School, the Blue Hills Bank Charitable Foundation, a new bank, a new organization, began giving out grants, and our Dr. Karen Spalding made all of our principals aware of this funding source. Our four elementary schools all received grants, as not to embarrass Ms. Sheridan as the principal of the Roosevelt in Boston. And the good news is that this last week, Dr. Spalding received, in the Pierce School, she wrote on their behalf, a $9,944 grant was granted to the Pierce School from the Blue Hills Bank Charitable Foundation for in the field creating environmental research experiences for students at the Pierce School. Very, very exciting news. For middle school students, the principals all wrote in to me to remind the viewing audience to go on ed line with end-of-the-year events. A highlight in Mr. Phelan's past life was always the eighth grade social at the Pierce School, which happens on June 13. I had, I met with the PTO presidents, and they are very excited at the Tucker. Representative Timmeltie is sponsoring some kind of a blow-up screen, and outside of the Tucker, there on the 13th, they're going to have movie night and watch a movie, and this is a fundraiser for the PTO. Again, to check your ed line pages so that parents know about move-up ceremonies and graduation events. And briefly, our high school students have two events to share, two highlights of the last week at the Middle and High School.
On June 8, the Milton crew attended the National Schools Championship Regatta in Saratoga Springs, New York. Milton crew took home bronze at the Nationals, and the boys of our zeros are Paul Corcoran, Lucas Campbell, Nico Gilmore, Shane McLaughlin, and Coxon Kip Melker. They all took home the bronze.
Thank you, ma'am.
Also, this past Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, the Pierce Middle School had their spring show, Tom Sawyer. It was directed by Mr. DeShanes with the help of Madame Rouleau, Ms. McKay, Mrs. Grimes, Ms. Royster, and I'm sure I'm forgetting a few people, but a lot of hard work and dedication went into the show, so congratulations to the cast and crew.
Thank you. And Mr. Phelan has one other update before we pass?
Sure, I think our middle school track team went to the state tournament and placed fourth in the state. This is only the second year of middle school track, and placing fourth at the state, I believe, Maura Downs, who attended last year, said that the group looked a little ragtag last year and didn't know if it belonged in Nishin, we were in fourth place. So that is a newly instituted middle school sports program that only in its second year placed fourth in the state, so great job to the Pierce Middle School track.
And I would ask the parents and guardians who are watching tonight to look for the communications from the schools about the ever-important and primary summer reading packets that are going to go home. And so we'll communicate with all families over the summer, and people always ask the last day of school, we just keep working, but for somebody at the end of the table, the last day of school is June 24th, a half-day. Thank you.
On the chairman's report, I wanted to report on some things that were approved in our June 4th executive session. We approved three-year collective bargaining agreements with MEA unit C and D through August 31st, 2016, with the same 2%, 2% and 1 in 1 in the last year economic package that units A and B received. We approved a 2% increase for non-union community schools employees effective July 1st, 2013. We increased the salary of the director of community schools from $62,038 to $63,279 effective July 1, 2013, and provided an additional annual stipend of $3,000 to address additional cash management responsibilities that are performed for the district. We increased the salary of the superintendent from $180,300 to $186,611 effective July 1st, 2013. We increased the salary of the director of consolidated facilities from $104,295 to $106,381 effective July 1, 2013. And we increased the hourly rate for work performed by the school committee secretary for the school committee from $35 to $35.70 effective July 1st, 2013, and offered a $5,400 annual stipend for performance of this work going forward instead of an hourly rate for fiscal '15. Mr. Pavlicek, can you pull up the retreat format slides on?
Sure.
So I have two items that go together, retreat format and scheduling. I've been promising to offer some ideas on how we format and schedule this year's retreat, and then we have a draft calendar that reflects some of those same recommendations. First recommendation is that we schedule the retreat at a time when the district performance data is available for planning and evaluation purposes. So, pretty straightforward. And our best estimate, again, based on the information that Ms. Walsh was able to get us, was that that would be somewhere around August 20. That will allow us to review the end-of-the-year report information that we'll be receiving at our meeting on the 25th, but also to begin the discussion of any internal assessment data that we have, and hopefully some general discussion of MCAS data. It'll be embargoed, but we might be able to talk about trends. So the recommendation is for the 20th. Format-wise, I'm suggesting that we engage a facilitator from Mass Association of School Committees. They provide them at no cost, and for those of you who have done facilitation, it's always helpful to have someone that's just focused on the discussion and not trying to do both, that is facilitate and participate. So that's offered for your consideration. And then the retreat itself, schedule a three-hour retreat with three one-hour segments to try to, again, structure the discussion a little differently. Data review and brainstorming with the school committee, the superintendent, the assistant superintendents, and the school principals. And I'm suggesting we add the school principals. This is an outgrowth of some of the planning that we did with, collective bargaining planning that we did with principals that Ms. Padera and Mr. Zulis participated in respectively. And there was some really, really good discussion, as you might expect. They had some very thoughtful ideas about directions we should go. Our two, data review, performance evaluation, and brainstorming by the school committee itself in preparation for the close-out discussion in Hour Three with the superintendent, which is the real planning and goal-setting, but both of these are built up to that. So those are the recommendations on the retreat. Any thoughts? Ms. Padera?
This might be just me, but I don't think so. If we're going to schedule a three-hour retreat, I think it should start before 7:00 then.
I absolutely agree.
So I just wanted to put that in there.
Thank you.
Ms. Sheridan?
So I have a slight concern about talking about MCAS data when it's embargoed.
We may not be able to do that, but I think even if we can, at that point, we will have all the other information that we need, I think, to...
It's a public meeting, even though it's a retreat, so I think that...
Right.
We've been looking for that, you know, internal data, and I think that would be a perfect time to use that.
Yeah.
And then align it with the MCAS data when it's available.
I agree.
This is every slope I can...
It is, it is. And the only question I have is whether the superintendent, without talking specifically, could say, "We met this goal, we didn't meet that goal." That may be allowed, but in any case, I think if we do it in August, all the other information that we might try to gather would be available. And as you said, I think even the internal assessment data, although we, it looks like we'll have that for English Language Arts, but not for math or science, but the thought is just, let's try to gather as much information as we can and give the superintendent and her staff a few weeks to do that, rather than trying to do the retreat at the end of this month or even next month.
That was my biggest concern. And then just maybe, why would we meet for an hour without the superintendent and then bring her back in? I feel like those two might be...
Because I think there may be some benefit to talking about how things went and having a candid discussion about that. It's awkward enough to do the superintendent's performance review in public. This is also a public meeting, but it's usually not televised and not as well-attended. But I think there may be some benefit to talking as a group before we start the actual planning and goal-setting.
I guess I'm just a little concerned that we are supposed to have that conversation in public for the evaluation.
Well, I...
I mean, I'm just looking at this for the first time, so I...
Yeah, I understand. And it's perfectly appropriate comments. I think we have to do it in public at some point, and I think in thinking about what goals we're setting, we have to do some review of how things went, and that involves how the superintendent did. I don't have a particular concern about whether the superintendent's in the room or not, although sometimes it's awkward enough to have those kinds of conversations with the superintendent sitting right beside us, but I don't have a particular preference either way on that. Ms. Bagley-Gil...
I guess I would agree with Lynda Lee in that this is a public meeting, even though it's not broadcast. The door's open, anybody can come in because it's a public meeting. So my neighbor could come in, but I don't know, I just feel like I would want to approach this with Ms. Gormley there. I don't know how she feels about it, but since it is a public meeting versus executive session, for example, I wouldn't want other people hearing what we're talking about if she's not. Just doesn't feel comfortable to me.
I'm fine with that. But again, for facilitation purposes, I would suggest that we do the data review, performance evaluation, and brainstorming, and then move to planning and goal-setting.
Yep, I like this. Breakups. Yep. Looks good.
Okay. Thank you. I don't think that requires a vote, but it's just a format. So we'll, on Hour Two, obviously, we'll add the superintendent, but otherwise, approved as submitted. On the calendar, so the calendar in some sense reflects that discussion. The retreat is proposed for August 25th. But other than that, this is, I added some discussion about the budget. I tried to be specific later on in the year about initially, for example, in December, December 10 specifically, the approval is only what we submit to the warrant committee. The January 21st vote is if we have to, what potential reductions we would approve, and then final approval after the warrant committee's all-day meeting of the budget on February Ms. Padera?
So I see that November 19th is a parent-teacher conference night.
Yeah.
Is that necessary, that we have that meeting that night, just because I think Mr. Zulis and I might be attending parent-teacher conferences?
No, we can, we can...
I mean, we can, I guess we can look at scheduling them.
Could we make the 12th instead of the 19th?
I mean, that would just make it easier. I mean, that would just make it easier.
Why don't we do that? Maura? The 12th, so make the meeting, propose for the 19th, the 12th instead, so...
November.
November, so we meet on the 5th and the 12th? Yes, Ms. Sheridan?
So I have a question around the June 25 meeting. That would be our third meeting of the month, and that was really only scheduled for that because of the potential retreat, so...
Right.
I would say we don't really even need to have that meeting unless...
I think we do, because that begins the discussion of this data report that the superintendent, Dr. Pavlicek, and Maura have worked very hard on. And I think we should at least, it might be a short meeting, but I think getting that data into our hands sometime this month is important. Because if we don't do it then, we're looking at three more weeks.
Can I ask a question about that? Because you have for July 16, end-of-year report discussion. Do we have to have the presentation separate from the discussion?
I think we do. It's a pretty rich, if you remember, it's a pretty rich, data-rich report. So asking us to see the presentation, absorb the data, and have the discussion is asking a lot. And I think we should start that discussion earlier rather than later, specifically in order to prepare for this retreat in August. We may have questions, we may have follow-ups, we may ask for a little more work, so I think we need to give the superintendent as much time on that as possible.
Okay.
Mr. Zulus?
One other thing, we're expecting to get a student discipline policy, and I think that would be helpful for the administration if we can surface that. I think, you know, in terms of the preparation of the materials for next year, it will help, it would help. You know, you correct me if I'm wrong, Mary, but it would help if we can consider that student discipline policy when we get it sooner rather than later.
Yes, we'd have to, because then in the July, I have the approval of the handbooks. They have to be then run off in August.
So would that have to be done in June or July?
Well, I think, again, if we get the draft, we're still waiting on the draft, we could, you know, in an ideal world, do a first reading June 25, and then perhaps, you know, be most of the way there and maybe get an approval and a second reading on the 16th.
Or we can do a first and second reading in one meeting as well.
Do that, too.
And do we have any time sensitivity on the bullying and background checks?
I think, I think it's been very useful. We're hoping to get a vote today on those, tonight on those, if we can, along with the second reading, because, again, I think it's useful for the administration going forward as they prepare the materials for next year.
Ms. Sheridan?
So, wondering about summer vacation time, and usually we kind of take a poll of people's vacation and see if they're available for the dates that are there. I don't know if we've inquired as to people's availability this summer, so I just want to put that one out there. And then, historically, we've only done one meeting in December?
Yeah, well, we did two last year.
Right, that was, that was not the norm.
It's not the norm, but it looks like it may become the norm, because we, in terms of budget development, if, we're probably not going to be able to meet the December 1 deadline, so I'm thinking that similar to what we did last year, we'll have a first December meeting to review the budget, and second December meeting to approve the budget. This is the submission to the warrant committee. So this is just tracking with what we did this year, which seemed to work.
So I'd like to maybe move a site council off of that one, then, and just...
So...
And we have a...
So on the 10th, we would move that one back and...
We have a wide-open date on April 15 with absolutely nothing on it. That's just crying for something.
Well, we're trying to get the site councils in earlier, but we can just push them back one each, so that's fine.
Can you review those dates for changes?
Yeah, so we, on December 10, we would just have the budget, and we would then start again with the Cunningham on the 7th, so the Calicat will go to the 21st, and so on.
And I know on February 1, sorry, February 4, we didn't have a site council scheduled for that date, so that would...
Yeah, that works, yeah.
We'd move Milton High School to the 4th, then.
Yeah, so I think we'd move them ahead, then, Mr. Walker, is what she's saying.
Because if you move them back, you're moving them all the way back to...
I said back, I meant ahead.
Okay, good. One more question, I'm sorry. On March 18, I'm just wondering why the advancement initiative update is in yellow? Is that...
I have no, I have no idea.
I just didn't know if there was something...
It's not even my favorite color.
I'm sorry. And if we don't have an agenda item for April 15, does that mean we don't have a meeting?
It might.
Do your taxes.
It may well.
If it's in yellow.
Sorry. When is April vacation? When's April school vacation?
It's later, it's the 20th.
Oh.
Motion on the calendar with those revisions?
Are we voting?
So move the calendar as amended.
Moved by Ms. Sheridan, seconded by Ms. Bagley-Jones. On the motion, all in favor? Prior-year water bill. This is a discussion we've been having offline, online, on television.
What's new?
I can't respond to that exactly, because I'm on television, Ms. Padera, but...
You're a little far from the mic.
Purposely.
I don't want to hear them.
But we have a, we've had some recent discussions with the selectman, town administrator, and Mr. Zulus has a proposal for how we might proceed. We're, I think, we're all interested, at least at this table, in getting this resolved this fiscal year. There was a period of time where, for some reason, the discussion seemed to lag, but we'd like to get this resolved during this fiscal year. So we have a proposed approach for how we might do that. Mr. Zulus, would you like to speak to that?
Fancy graphics to put up.
Yeah, no, I don't have any, I don't have any PowerPoints on this one, thankfully. So because of the timing and the end of the fiscal year and our meeting schedule, we can go into depth in discussion on this, if you wish. But given that we don't meet until the 25th of this month, and the finance committee meets every week, the thought was to delegate to the finance committee the role of trying to negotiate this, with the idea that the school committee will approve this by approving the bill as part of the warrant. So, so, so obviously, the finance subcommittee would try to negotiate this and resolve it prior to the end of the fiscal year, and then when you get your warrant, that, hopefully, that resolution will be in the warrant, then hopefully a revised water bill, we'll see how it works out, but hopefully a fair and reasonable resolution of that will be in the warrant. So that's the idea. And, you know, we can go into depth and discussion on that, but that's kind of the idea in terms of process and timing.
Sheridan?
Mr. Zulus, could you please detail the financial responsibilities as we're being, that we're being asked to pay?
Sure.
Please.
So I'll try to give the Reader's Digest version. For fiscal years, I believe 11 and 12, the school department received and paid its water bills, as it always does, on time, without fail. Last spring, it came to the attention of the DPW and the schools that the water meter at the Milton High School was broken. And so the water, I believe the DPW did an analysis and came to the conclusion that that water meter had been broken for a while, and came up with an estimate of what it thought the water bills should have been for fiscal 11 and fiscal 12. And in September, I believe, of this year, presented the, the school department with a water bill for $46,000 to, which was its estimate of the correct water bill or the additional water amounts for fiscal 11 and fiscal 12. As a result of our desire to get a resolution of this that we thought was fair and reasonable, Lynda Lee and I went before the Board of Selectmen and discussed this, and we presented a proposal to split the bill 50/50, 50% to the school department and 50% to the DPW, because it was, it was our view that there may have been culpability on both sides for this, these mistaken bills, and that it was fair to split the bill 50/50. There was support for that proposal from the DPW as well, and that is where it sat. There was subsequently a meeting that I didn't attend with the Board of Selectmen, but I don't believe the Board of Selectmen has actually acted on that proposal as yet, so I think the goal is to try to get a resolution.
I think that's, I think that's where we sit.
Just one other point to add, I think, is that because it's a bill that we received this year, even though it's from a prior year's receipt, we need to pay it by the end of this fiscal year, otherwise we can't pay it out of our coffers.
That is correct.
So it's just important to note that fact.
That's our sense of urgency, correct.
Exactly.
So on the, was that a motion, Mr. Zulus?
So, I'm not sure whether it needs a motion, but I guess we can, we can move...
Oh, if the school committee is delegating a party...
Yeah, that's right, that's right. So the motion would be for the school committee to delegate to the finance subcommittee the authority to resolve this issue with the Board of Selectmen, with the idea that that resolution hopefully will end up in the warrant before the end of the year.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Zulus, seconded by Ms. Sheridan.
Nope.
With me.
With you.
I used her microphone, though.
Wow.
Trying to get a little tricky on you there, didn't I?
It's working. Did you get that, Maura? On the motion, all in favor?
Well, can we have some discussion before?
Yeah, sure, yeah.
So I just would like, I guess I would just like it stated that there's been a lot of discussion about water bills in the town this year. And I think that we made a very fair offer of paying half, and I would hope that that would be, you know, seriously considered somewhere in that ballpark for a bill that, in fact, has already been paid, because, as was noted, it was for fiscal year 11, 12. So that bill has, the water bill for that year has already been paid. And again, as we stated, I believe, Mr. Zulus, when we went to meet with the Board of Selectmen, that, you know, for us to pay that means we're taking something away from the students to help offset costs for, again, a bill that's already been paid. So just wanted to note that.
Understood. On the motion?
Glenn, do you want to say?
Just a point that, you say the water meter was broken. It wasn't that we didn't get a bill, but the contention is that the bill was underrepresenting the amount of water being used. It was part of the meter, in fact, that was broken. These are complex meters with multiple flow-throughs, and it was one of the sections of the meter that wasn't working properly. So we did receive a bill for all those quarters, we did pay a bill for all those quarters. The contention by the DPW is the bill they sent us wasn't large enough.
Right, that's, yeah, I mean, again, maybe I didn't make that clear, that this was all paid, and this was just, in our view, an incorrect bill that we're trying to fix. We're trying to help the other department fix at this point.
On the motion, all in favor? Oh, wow, it's unanimous. Ms. Sheridan, MASC nomination?
Yes, so last year, we selected Mr. Pavlicek as a nominee, as our nominee for the annual MASC nomination, and this year, the Milton School Committee would like to place another nomination. This year, it is for the community, what is the exact title? Community Partner, I believe, sorry. And so we would really like to have the approval of this committee to put forth this nomination. Do I have to say who it's for?
Oh...
I'd like to keep it a surprise if we can.
But how do we vote?
Just vote in favor of the nomination. I don't know the answer to that question, so if I have to say it, I'll say it.
I think the document's a public document, if we vote it.
Right. So we would like to nominate the Milton Foundation for Education for our Community Partner Award, for the annual MASC Community Partner Award.
Good nomination.
I think that's excellent.
Friend of Public Education, Community Leader, Outstanding School Partner.
Okay, it's called the Friend of the Public Education slash Community Leader, Outstanding School Partner. And they are all of those things to us, so...
So on Ms. Sheridan's motion to nominate the MFE as the Outstanding School Partner for MASC's award process this year, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Padera. On the motion, all in favor?
Can I actually just say one thing, Leroy? Myself, sometimes I get too caught up in focusing on the numbers and some of the documents and not enough on the recognition, and so I...
And even on poor graphics and presentations.
Well, we'll get to that later in the evening. But I want to thank Lynda Lee and Becky for focusing on this and taking the laboring oar and really putting together, I think, a great proposal, and so I really want to thank those two for doing this.
And even if they don't win, they are our Community Partners.
Absolutely. On the motion, all in favor? It's enthusiastically unanimous.
Mr. Walker, may I say one more thing?
Yeah.
Sorry, since I do have the microphone. It's only 10 days until We Are Milton will have our wonderful celebration on June 21 on Hutchinson Field, beginning at 5:00 until approximately 10:00, where the fireworks will go off. That's a Saturday night, so I just want to remind all the folks watching about that. And on Sunday, we will have the Milton Music Celtic Sunday, and that will be six hours of all different Celtic music, as I talked about before. One new item is that we have some lawn signs available, and it's a $10 cost to, if people are willing to sponsor a sign for $10 and put it on your lawn, we would greatly appreciate it. $10 goes, isn't that much out of your pocket, and it really helps us meet some of our goals for some special things we're trying to do this year. So it serves two purposes of supporting us and getting the word out. So if anyone is interested in purchasing a lawn sign, or if you can't purchase it, just call us, and you have a great site, we will, I'll pay for your sign, and you can put it up there. And just check out our website, wearmilton.org, and we will, you can sign up, and we'll get you a sign, so, thank you, and I hope to see everyone there on June 21 and 22.
Thank you. Follow-up, I think we're doing pretty well, actually, and so I'm going to skip that. Finance Subcommittee approval of the vendor warrants. Dr. Pavlicek, would you like to, do we have a warrant for approval?
Yeah, it's over here. It's warrant number 50, in the amount of $270,856.96. It's warrant number 50 in the amount of $270,856.96.
Do I have a motion to approve the warrant?
So, move. Second.
Moved by Ms. Sheridan, seconded by Ms. Padera. That's warrant number 50 in the amount of $270,856. On the motion, all in favor? It's unanimous. Policy Subcommittee?
Well...
No, please.
Once again, the Policy Subcommittee finds itself in the bowels of the needle.
Oh, no. Didn't learn his lesson.
So, we...
Yes, yes.
We want to wake everybody up. There's actually sound.
Ms. Padera.
There's actually...
Ms. Padera.
Never.
Oh, I shouldn't say that.
It's so sad.
Thank you, Mr. Zulis. You know, I think that's a marked improvement over last week.
We liked it.
I liked last week's better.
I did, too.
I think that you're showing great growth.
Well, then he'll be up to South Park.
Right, right.
As measured by...
All right, on to the serious business of our two, second meeting of two policies. First, bullying prevention. We reviewed this policy last week. We had some suggested changes. You have in your packet, I believe it's in your packet, a marked version that show the changes from last week, and I'll run through them briefly. On the first page, and then it's, excuse me, captured, on the fourth page is a reference to a definition of retaliation. We took the definition of retaliation that is provided in the existing policy and inserted it here. And then the second change, the second substantive change is on page two, where we define bullying not as bullying or cyberbullying, but both bullying and cyberbullying. And we sent this for vetting with outside counsel. And the response we got by email to both this and the other policy, the other revisions that we made were, quote unquote, "These look great." So, I take that as the view from outside counsel, that these work and that these work well. So, absent, well, I guess if, after we have some, if we have some discussion, I'll make a motion to delete our existing policy, ACH, in its entirety and replace it with this new policy, ACH.
Why don't you make a motion, then we can have some discussion.
I'll do that. So, I move to delete the existing policy, ACH, in its entirety and replace it with the new policy, ACH, as amended, that you have in front of you.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Zulis, seconded by Ms. Padera. Any discussion?
I think it looks great.
On the motion, all in favor? Passes unanimously.
Second, the, excuse me, amended background check. This is actually two policies that we looked at last week, background check and the Model Corey policy, which is the criminal offender record information policy. Again, you have before you marked versions of the two policies showing the changes based on the discussion that we had last week. I'll run through them quickly. In the first page, there was some discussion, it was brought up by Mrs. Kelly, about not putting the actual amounts for the background check, the fingerprint background checks, in the policy, but providing that they would be as mandated by the appropriate agency so that then, when they changed, it would be clear in the policy. And so, we made that change. Again, outside counsel has told us that this looks, that this looks fine. We made a couple of non-substantive changes to clearly define what CHRI means, Criminal History Record Information, and SAFIS, S-A-F-I-S statewide, excuse me, Automated Fingerprint Identification System. And those are the only changes. So, I will move to delete our existing policy, ADDA, in its entirety and replace it with the new policy, ADDA, that you have before you as amended.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Zulis, seconded by Ms. Padera. On the motion, all in favor?
And, and, oh.
Aren't you done?
No, I'm not, actually.
You're not?
We have, I don't have any more graphics. The Model Corey policy is actually a separate policy that we don't have now, and that was part of the background check.
Is that on the agenda?
Well, it's part of the background check policy.
It's...
So, it's an adjunct. So, it's, it was, it was, they were connected last week, and so, we reviewed it last week.
You just voted the background check policy.
Well, the background check is ADDA. The Model Corey policy is an adjunct to that, so it would be ADDR. We reviewed it last week. We had them together last week, but it is, but it is...
Please proceed.
It is not something that we, it is not something that we currently have. So, the, what you have before you is, would be a new policy, technically. It's currently covered, was currently covered by our existing policy, ADDA, which we've just replaced. And so, this would be a, an adjunct policy, policy number ADDAR, which would put in place the Model Corey policy, which is the criminal offender record information. This is part of the background check policy that we reviewed. It's just segmented out into a separate policy. There are no substantive changes from last week. And again, outside counsel has told us that, along with the others, that this looks great. So, I would move to adopt as a new policy, policy ADDI, which is the DCJIS, which is the Department of Criminal Justice Information Service, Model Corey, which is the criminal offender record information policy.
Whatever you said. Second.
Moved by Mr. Zulis, seconded by Ms. Padera.
You said ADDA-I for the last one. Isn't it R?
It's R.
That's right, R is right.
Yeah. Did I say I?
You said I.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just wanted to clarify.
If we had the Policy Subcommittee reports earlier in the evening, perhaps I would not, I would not misstate my policies. But yes, it's ADDA-R.
On the motion, all in favor? It's unanimous.
Thank you, that was good.
So, I'm going to take the liberty of adding an agenda item of sorts, and I've just been informed that this may be Mr. Phelan's last meeting with us.
If you want to rearrange the schedule, we might be able to...
So, I'm going to offer everyone the opportunity to say a few words.
I'm not prepared.
I'm thankful.
That's a good thing. I was actually going to ask, was, I asked you in the elevator, every time I see him, I say, "When's your last day? When's your last day?" So, is this for sure?
Trying to rush him out?
No. Is this for sure your last school committee meeting?
Due to the fact that the original meeting on the 25th was a retreat I had not planned on attending, and I may have a schedule conflict, so this may very well be my last meeting, yes.
You'd do anything to get out of these meetings. But I, you know...
I think I hit everyone for the last six years.
I couldn't make it to your party, so I did, I would welcome a chance to say something because it's really sad to me that you're leaving. I came on to the school committee when you and Mary were appointed, and you, I particularly came on the school committee because you and Mary were appointed, and I wanted to support the work that you both have done. And I just have the most tremendous respect for you. I will never forget, the first time I saw you in your shirtsleeves out on Brook Road, directing traffic and whistling, and I thought, "Who is this guy?", as I'm driving to my school. And then I found out who you wore when I saw you, I think it was a golf cart with James Jett down at Tedeschi's, herdin' the kids from Tedeschi's into school. So, that was my introduction to John Phelan. And then my next introduction was when, I guess my oldest was in fifth grade, and there were budget cuts, surprise, surprise. And there were all these rumors about what was going to get cut, and the fifth-grade parents were up in arms. So, I went, you know, just to sort of hear what was being said and whatever, and parents were fit to be tied. And John stood up there, cool as a cucumber, didn't bat an eye, just said, "I hear what you're saying, but this is why I chose these cuts. I won't lose any program this way. If I cut a program here, I won't get it back. We won't have it. This is what I'm doing. It's the fairest, the most equitable, the most academically, whatever." And you stood to your guns on that. And that was a powerful group of parents who were ready to skin you alive, and you handled them so well. And that's been my experience with you, is that you're fair, you're honest, you know when to stand your ground, and you know when to give in, and I just have the most tremendous professional and personal respect for you. And I think I'm just in denial about that you really are leaving, which is why I keep saying, "Is this your last, when are you leaving? When are you leaving?", because I really don't want to see you go. But Belmont is very, very lucky to get you, and I'm just so sorry to see you go. But I'm glad for you, and I'm glad for Belmont.
Thank you very much, Kristin.
I mean that from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you.
Sheridan.
So, I think that I bought him a...
You have it.
A vest. Do you still have it?
There it is.
Because he was out on the top of Gala Road directing traffic, and I said, "Nothing can happen to him. We need to take care of him." So, we got him one of those glow-in-the-dark vests, so that when he was directing traffic morning, noon, and night, he could be seen. So, I share some of your sentiments, Kristin, when speaking about John Phelan. You have been a valuable asset to the Milton Public Schools for many years, not just in your role here as the Assistant Superintendent, but you really seem to be that person, John, who is the master of all trades. When something needs to be done, you take it on and you learn it from beginning to end, top to bottom, and you see it through to completion. And that's a huge skill set today, I think, where you really aren't afraid to take anything on. I've seen you grow tremendously in the time that you've been here, under Mary's guidance and through your own initiatives, in your work with parents, in your work with administrators and teachers. You just really bring so much to the plate, and every day you come in ready to give 110%. And that will be missed. But the good news is that you'll still live in town and we'll still get to see you around. And, you know, if you really get bored on a Wednesday night, you can always come to a school committee meeting and taunt us from the...
Around policy time.
There you go. But all kidding aside, we wish you, I wish you, the best of luck, and thank you for all that you've given to the hundreds and thousands of children that have passed through your doors and families that you've worked with, so thank you.
Thank you very much. That's very nice.
She get all mushy. You're a lot of fun, Mr. Phelan. You make our meetings a lot more fun, so I'm going to miss that about you. But, you know, you do really good work, too, which, you know, we kind of kid about, but at the same time, you know your stuff, and I think you're going to do great work at Belmont. But I think you're going to miss us somewhat, too. So, I think, I have a little feeling, like Ms. Bagley Jones, that you'll be back, and we'll save up some good jokes for you when you come back. Give you a little bit of a hard time, but we'll be happy to see you.
Thank you very much.
Well, I'm a new guy, and so, I've only had the pleasure for about a year of working with you. Usually, the way I judge an endeavor is to the extent that you work hard, do good work, and have a little fun along the way. And, you know, by that measure, I think you're aces, kid. And let me entice you, though, to show up on June 25th, because knowing how much you like to receive awards and plaques, maybe we can come up with some kind of award. And if you're going to be here, I would commit to coming up with some kind of plaque to give you on the 25th.
He already has. Can I just add to that? Because you had said something recently about Chinese food for your last meeting, and I was really thinking on the 25th, "Oh, well, surprise him with Chinese food, but no, it's not going to be."
That would have been nice.
Still not coming on the 25th. Hey, girl.
But thank you.
So, I think we first met, I'm not sure if we first met on the ball fields or when you were James's principal at Pierce, but his middle school career was a time when he was pretty vulnerable and needed someone to help him build his self-esteem and help me. And you did that. So, as a parent, you always remember people that are good to your children, and you were one of those people. And I guess you could say you had me at hello. But I'm really happy that, that was a great relationship, but I'm really happy that I've gotten to know you professionally because the impact that you've had on this school district is phenomenal. And to see how you interact, and for the people watching at home, I had a graduation party for my son, who just graduated from college, and I asked John to come because he had played such a significant role in James's life. And to see him, he got there and he knew half the kids in the room. And half the parents in the room were saying, "Oh, Mr. Phelan, you did this for me. Oh, you did that for me." And the kids were lining up. It was just amazing to see the relationship that you have with the people in this town. And I remember when we had the onsite interview, when you were seeking superintenances, and I said something, and I remember it, it said, "This is a guy who, the students love him, the teachers love him, his peers love him, his boss loves him. Doesn't get any better than that." So, I agree with Kristin. I think you've been ready for quite a while, and Belmont's getting someone. And I said to them, "This is, this is a guy who's going to be one of the top superintendents in the state, and I really believe that." So, I'm sad that we're losing you, but I'm happy that you have this opportunity, and it's your time. Thanks.
Thank you.
And if I might, I've had the pleasure of being able to, different groups want to recognize John, and I think what speaks to John is the special needs class at the high school and middle school came together, and they gave John a gift, and they had food and refreshments yesterday. And so, Will said that the middle school students always thought that John had, could see out of the back of his head. And so, John, I've said to every school committee member, that the way that John Phelan knows every family in this town and what that brings to a school system is invaluable. And the relationship with teachers and administrators and the way they respond to John's leadership, but being a member of their team and making every one of them better. And as I said at your party of over 300, personally and professionally, you have made me better, and I'm glad that we get this chance on TV to recognize you. And from the bottom of my heart, for everything that you've done for me personally and professionally, I want to thank you publicly here, and I'm better because I know John Phelan and have worked with you.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, John.
Dr. Pavlicek?
Well, I can't be the only one at the table who doesn't speak, so. I was on the school committee when we hired John and Mary into this position. I've worked with them as long as they've been in their respective positions, and I really thought I knew them very well. And I have to tell you that the last year, in the office next to John, you have no clue. And I have to tell you that the last year, in the office next to John, you have no clue how much he does around here. I mean, from the school committee side, we see certain things as school committee members. We see how the system runs, but until you see the day-to-day of that parent in the office who is foaming at the mouth, or the phone calls you have to take, or the amazing minutia you have to get into on what seems to be a relatively straightforward topic, I mean, you really have no idea. And I'm impressed. I'm very impressed. So, I'm going to miss him, and I'm scared to death that I'm going to have to do some of those things, but it's going to be very different without John.
So, once more, John? Thank you.
Yeah. I'd like to thank Mary for her wonderful 16 years of partnering and working in Milton, and especially for the last six years. It's been a great learning opportunity and a lot of fun. I'd like to thank Glenn for the last year. I think Glenn has been an incredible addition to the leadership team, and like Glenn has got to know me better, I've got to know Glenn better from our working relationship, and I'm so glad that we were able to do this this year. It's been, it's been great to get to know Glenn. He does a great job. I'd like to thank the committee for always being supportive, everybody. The committee that's in front of us right now has been nothing but supportive for the last six years, and previous committees that have led to my hiring as Assistant Principal, all the way to my hiring here at Central Office. All the staff, the teachers are the best here, the principals are the best, the kids are great, they're amazing young people, we're so fortunate, and the parents are great. So, there's no better place to go to school, there's no better place to live than Milton Public Schools in the town of Milton. So, thank you very much for the opportunity. You've given my family a really nice chunk of time to live and work and grow in the community, so thank you very much for the opportunity. Much appreciated.
Glad to have you.
Thank you, John.
So, we should probably end there, but we can't. Citizens Speak topic response, we don't have any next meeting agenda items? No? Okay. No Citizens Speak, because there's no one in the audience. So, entertaining motion to go into executive session for purpose of discussing negotiation strategy for non-union personnel not to return to public session, and the discussion of which in public session might compromise our negotiating position.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Bagley-Jones.
Yes.
Ms. Sheridan.
Yes.
Ms. Padera.
Yes.
Mr. Zulus.
Yes.
Mr. Walker, yes.
Perfect.